Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of Monday, November the 23rd. The clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Amos.
Here.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. Councilmember Ashford asked me to just say that she's absent tonight because she's with family in Florida for Thanksgiving. Minutes are before you from the regular meeting of November the 9th. Is there a motion to receive and file?
For moved.
Councilmember Amos, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We have one presentation. If the clerk would please read it.
Chief Michael Reeves will accept a $50,000 donation from Dorothea Knight for use by the Port Huron Police Department's K-9 unit.
Where am I going? Where am I going?
Right over here.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Tonight's a very important night for the Port Huron Police Department and its K-9 unit. We've made an impression, and somebody's made an impression on us. Ms. Dorothea Knight has gladly funded a $50,000 donation to the Port Huron Police Department's K-9 unit in order for us to have state-of-the-art equipment for our canines. As you can see, both canines are here tonight, and if anybody knows Mrs. Knight, she's an animal lover, to say the least. And I was, we've been conversing and talking a little bit, and she's been making donations to the department. She wants to make sure the dogs have plenty of snacks and treats and bones and stuff like that.
Cookies and cookies.
Cookies. She wants to make sure we're well-stocked in those, and it's most appreciative. But the $50,000 donation will allow us to buy two brand-new Ford Interceptor utility vehicles to put our K-9 units in. Both units that we have now are outdated. One is retrofitted from a patrol car, and the other one was supposed to be retired approximately a year and a half ago, but we haven't had the funds in order to do that. As we sit here tonight and accept the donation from Mrs. Knight, she's handed me another envelope, and in that envelope, can I read this?
Sure, you read it.
Port Huron Police Department, attention Officer Jennifer Sly. Officer Sly, as you mentioned, because of age and I'm sure a lot of hard work, Braddock is showing symptoms of hurting. With that thought in mind, and the fact you will more than likely be first to realize when Braddock must be retired from his daily responsibilities as your partner, I've enclosed an additional $25,000 check, a donation to Port Huron Police Department's K-9 unit, that should allow you, whomever, to find another fine partner. So tonight, on behalf of the Port Huron Police Department, you've given us a total of $75,000. Why don't you say a few words? See, he's happy about it.
Well, I am. I'm just thrilled. When I made that first $500 donation, I said it was for cookies and toys, and I received such a wonderful surprise from Smith and Sly, who came to my home. They seemed so pleased, and it really pleased me to see that, that they were happy that somebody paid attention to them. So then I did a little research and found out that there are a lot of communities, a lot of counties and cities that are striving for these K-9 units, and they don't have the money. And I hope that enough advertising, enough gets out in the paper to let people realize the importance. You know, the one thing, I can just visualize stopping somebody thinking they're a criminal, whatever, stopping them, and having this K-9, having this dog, this police dog prevents that person from running. It also prevents then an altercation to where they get into a fight and somebody gets hurt. Usually, the policeman winds up in jail for trying to stop somebody. So it's been a pleasure for me to do this, and I hope it works out well for everyone.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Knight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We certainly appreciate your donation. I know the Police Department does, City Council does. We appreciate your donation. Thank you very, very much.
All right.
I do see your letters every once in a while in the paper, so I know you're an animal lover, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're all welcome. Thank you.
We'll move on to public hearings.
Number one, please.
Number one is to hear comments on code case number 14-014 located at 930 Court Street to determine whether it constitutes a nuisance as defined by the Port Huron City Council. Following the hearing, council will consider the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing Seeing no one, I declare public hearing number one closed and ask for a motion for immediate demolition.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, is there discussion?
It was...
I guess I really didn't give you an opportunity to get up and speak.
Oh, wait, if I could a little bit?
Well, no, if you don't mind, then the public knows what we're dealing with here.
Good evening, Mayor Rep. and Council. What you have before you is property at 930 Court Street. This is a property that has been essentially vacant for three years. The water was turned off in October of 2012. For the past year, it's been in the process of being a code case. We've made numerous attempts to reach the owner. The new owner is a resident of Hamilton, Ontario. There's been three certified letters that have been sent. In addition, we also tried to reach out to them through a phone call. We found out that the number's been disconnected, and we have not had any response. In August of this year, we had a search warrant issued, and the inspectors had the opportunity to go through the property and found numerous code violations, both with the electrical, the heating system, the plumbing system, and as you can see, both the physical nature of the house, both an interior and exterior, is in an exceedingly dilapidated state. So we're asking that we move forward with immediate demolition.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Haynes? Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Public hearing number two.
Is to hear comments on code case number 15-002 located at 1902 23rd Street to determine whether it constitutes a nuisance as defined by the Port Huron City Code. Following the hearing, council will consider the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number two? Seeing no one, I will declare a public hearing number two closed and ask for a motion for demolition.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris. Mr. Haynes, if you'd like to tell us about this one.
We do have new news regarding this property. Kevin Majeski of Trot Law called this afternoon, and they are going to be moving forward with the demolition on their own volition, so we no longer have to demolish the property, although we are asking that we do approve it tonight, just to ensure that the demolition moves forward. Although they have given us assurances that they will be doing this within 60 days, and we'll be moving forward for bids and permits.
Any questions from anyone on Council? Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Move on now to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the City Council this evening, if they'd like to come forward and have four minutes, if you give us your name, please first.
Kristy Hazard, 219 Huron Avenue, a mayor and council. I just want to remind you that Saturday is Shop Small in downtown Port Huron. A lot of the merchants have, and restaurants have specials going on. We invite you downtown to start your Christmas shopping. And I also want to talk to you on behalf of Quota Club, which is a nonprofit organization of professional women in service to St. Clair County. And I just want to let you know that in December, just in time for the December Town Hall, we'll have the new hearing loop installed, the mezzanine and the other, the upper floor. So that will mean that anyone that is currently wearing a hearing aid will have amplification just by sitting within the hearing loop. And also, that's the third project we've done in Port Huron. We also did one of the rooms at the convention center, and that represents about $40,000 that we've given to the city. So just in time for Town Hall, anybody that's wearing a hearing aid will get automatic amplification from Quota Club. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening?
Francis Hoffman III, resident of Greenwood Township, owner of 401 Grand River, right over here. Just for the record, I wanted to confirm that the city's commercial real estate advisor/broker that was mentioned at the last meeting, I wanted you guys to confirm, or Mr. Freed in particular, confirm that it is in fact Kramer Commercial Realty? Yes, sir, it is. Could you mind just saying yes, it is?
What are we referring to? I mean, what was the subject matter at the time?
It was in reference to the broker's price opinion on McMorn Pavilion that was referenced at the last meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
Whereas they basically asserted that the value of it was nothing. I just wanted to confirm that it was in fact Kramer Commercial Realty, owned by Jerry Kramer.
Yes.
Okay, it is. Okay. The same Jerry Kramer who served on the SC4, what is, I'm sorry, the SC4, what is it? Not the commission, the, I'm sorry, here I go getting nervous again, standing in front of you guys, I apologize. My goodness.
Board of Trustees.
Not the Board of Trustees, no. The other one that is an individual coalition that raises funds for SC4.
They have an alumni association.
Not the Alumni Association, the, oh my goodness.
There's a foundation.
The SC4 Foundation, there we go.
And I don't know if it's on it or not.
Okay, well, he served on it for two and a half years. So the only broker's price opinion that you guys have solicited from McMorn Pavilion is from an individual who spent two and a half years working towards expanding the campus of SC4. So I just wanted for the record for you guys to confirm that it was in fact Kramer Commercial Realty that gave you that price opinion, and that it was in fact Jerry Kramer who was, you know, working for essentially SC4. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening?
Good evening, Scott Farquhar, 1018 Varney Street. Again, thank you all for your time. I have something that's, I guess it'd be for future reference. I was born in Port Huron, raised in Port Huron, been here all my life, and we are striving to make strides to make the town better, cleaning up the town, tearing down the houses that need to be done. I think it's something that the City Council needs to consider, coming up with some type of a city ordinance in the begging, in the panhandling. It's an eyesore. I personally, I've told you where I live, I just told you this now, I've got a regular that's there, and I've offered him a job. I've offered two of them a job. Neither one of them probably qualify with background checks and things like that, but neither one of them come. And the quote from one of them was, "Does it pay better than $15 an hour? Because that's what I make, panhandling." Not paying taxes on that $15 an hour, I'm sure. I have witnessed in front of my house, the guy panhandling, gets on his cellphone, makes a phone call, a car comes by, hands him something through the window, we all have a real good idea what that something probably is, and then goes behind, down the little hill there and comes back up. I would say with the little bit of street knowledge I have, which I have quite a bit of street knowledge, there's a drug deal. Plain view at a very main intersection, and it's just a step. The guy that wants to sell balloons for the, at the carnival time or whatever, he's got to get a license. He's got to have some kind of liability. And I know federally, I've looked into it, and panhandling's legal on, not on public land. But that doesn't mean that we can't have a city ordinance against it. And I think it's something that needs to be addressed in the future, and I don't think there's anybody on the council or in town, other than the three regulars that I see all the time, that would disagree with me. We're fortunate in the city of Port Huron, we have a good soup kitchen program, the United Way. I'm sure there are some people out there that are going hungry, but it's very limited. And in this town, we just had someone give $75,000 to the Police Department. You hear United Way and all of the places looking for donations, we're a giving town. There's no doubt about that. This is kind of a bad joke, but we just gave away McMorn. Look, we give everything, you know? We're good people. But, I mean, it's something that we need to, we need to address in the future. Hopefully, in the cold weather, they'll decide to stay home, and he made enough money through the summer. But it's an eyesore to everybody, and they're picking people coming into our town. And I just think it's something we need to look at in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't disagree with you. In fact, I've already mentioned it to the city manager at one point to look into it, but it is allowed under state law, and I know that the legislators are looking at some different things right now, too, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
If I could, it was also a Supreme Court decision that has classified that as freedom of speech, and so we can't even regulate it. If you sell something, we can regulate it. If you beg for a handout, the Supreme Court says we can't stop you, because it annoys me to death. I don't give them anything, so I see it too.
I believe in, I know my four minutes is up, but I believe there is, in the books, way down if we look deeply, there is a vagrance ordinance already. I know it's a lot of extra work for the Police Department. If you don't have $20 in your pocket, you're a vagrant. Get on down the road. You know, it's kind of like a cowboy movie. Take them to the edge of town. That Fort Rasher Mary's will do.
Well, we certainly will look into it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening?
Scott Richard Warden, 412 Grand River, Port Huron, Port Huron, Michigan, city of Port Huron. I'm here to follow up on your, the vote for two weeks ago that City Councilman Ken Harris, City Councilman Ruiz, City Councilwoman Ashford, City Councilwoman Archibald, and Mayor Pauline Rep. You have defied the will of the people, the people of Port Huron, the city taxpayers of Port Huron, the business owners of Port Huron. You guys know that if that went to a vote of the people of Port Huron, it would not pass, and you guys still, in advance of that, still went ahead and voted to give McMorn Pavilion Junior Ice Rink away. I do want to also, just a couple of things, as you guys had some written speeches that you had prepared before last meeting, even though there was some more information that came out of that meeting, you already had your decision made, and you had your speech written. So I do want to just point out some of this stuff, that on November 9th, you read in, again, this is Mayor Pauline Rep., your speech there, you mentioned, and I'm going to read this, that you basically said that you've had a meeting, you did have a meeting, in late June and July with the Port Huron Minor Hockey and the Silver Stick and that group. And then you actually quoted and you said, quote, "I have never personally heard from them since on November 9th. We've been here at city council meetings, the only way to communicate to you guys, repeatedly to you, and you've heard, and letters, and us pleading to you to let it go, to communicate about this." So I do want to make sure that that seemed a little out of line, that you did not hear from anybody since then. The other point is, when you address the, some of the things about a potential backroom deal, or my point to all this, quote-unquote, is discussions have been going on in the public regarding the McMorn Pavilion for years, and those affected, you would think that they would have known the day's coming, and that options should have been explored. Well, since June 22nd of this year, overwhelming amount of people, and we've continually come in, and we did want to explore options, we've offered to explore all options, and we've repeatedly told you guys as city council members that we were not involved in discussing any more of these options. So I want to make sure for the record, I did feel that that was, you've been sitting here every time, and we've been trying to reach out to you as mayor, we don't know what else to do, is to come to city council if we're not getting involved with the city manager or McMorn Authority to be able to follow up on this, or even the consultant. The other thing is, you kind of finished off with a statement there on November 9th that you did think, no disrespect to Port Huron Minor Hockey, but having them take over the Pavilion is just not viable, quote-unquote, based on the facts presented. Well, actually, the consultant, Jason Thompson from B&amp;D, back on October 12th, when he did his presentation, he actually stated, quote-unquote, "He does not think the Hockey Association is a bad proposal." That's the consultant. So why are we saying this type of thing when prior to that, that was actually presented to you, even from your own consultant, the decision was made? And the last thing is about the ice surfaces, continually to reference that there's a study, we know there's not a study, even after you know there's not a study. Back on October 12th, you asked McMorn Authority, Mark Neal, and the consultant, wasn't there a study done, quote-unquote? Hasn't there been a study done that stated how many ice surfaces we do command?
Your four minutes is up.
I got three more seconds.
Oh.
And he did not answer. I want to have that for the record. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? Our public comment closed. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. The items on the consent agenda, received and filed notice from Port Huron Township Planning Commission regarding a public hearing scheduled for December the 3rd at 7:00 PM to hear comments regarding a special land use approval request for a medical marijuana growth and distributor's facility proposed for 3,200 Dove Road, Port Huron Township. Received and filed notification that Robert Beeden has been reappointed by the mayor to the Traffic Study Committee for a term to expire November 28th, 2017. Received and filed notification that Jane O'Sullivan has been reappointed by the city manager to the Port Huron Housing Commission for a term to expire December 19th, 2020. Approved the reappointment of Councilmembers Anita Ashford and Rico Ruiz to serve on the Bluewater Area Transportation Commission for terms to expire on November 24th, 2017. Approved the postponement of the second meeting in December. And those are the items on the consent agenda. We will move to, from the city manager, number one.
Is accepting the quote from Smart Power System in the amount of $10,364 for a new onboard hydraulic generator system for fire engine number three.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, is there discussion? Take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Resolution number one.
Is approving the agreement with repo cast.com for electronic auction services to sell or dispose of city goods or personal property no longer needed or has become obsolete, and authorizing the purchasing agent or designated representative to sell such items to the highest bidder through this electronic auction services without the necessity of obtaining prior city council approval for those items exceeding the threshold amount.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald.
Could we have an explanation of what the changes are, how long we've used them, what the cost is, et cetera, for our viewers?
Sure. City Manager, Mayor, council members, a few years back, I brought a different company to you called propertyroom.com that we utilized to dispose of a number of items from our property room and the different accounts that we manage there, drug forfeiture, anonymous crime act, there's a bunch of different accounts that we utilize there, basically during an online auction process that a lot of other municipalities were utilizing. That company was out of Chicago, and the council, I appreciate, approved that. We used them for a few years, and what they did is they would send a large truck from Chicago when we'd have a pickup, and they'd pick up all the property that we were disposing of. So if it was 30 bicycles and a bank safe, or whatever items were being disposed of, they would come here, drive from Chicago, pick those up, take them back, put them into lots, and then put them on an auction. Within the last year and a half, propertyroom.com has changed their mindset and changed their business practices, that they now don't take a lot of the items that we tend to gather in a property room, in a police auction property room, nor do they take other items that may be ancillary, that we're getting rid of, that we deemed obsolete. As an example, I know everybody was a real fan favorite of the old white chairs that sat in the Room 408 for, since the 1970s. If we wanted to dispose of those chairs, they wouldn't come and take those and put them into an auction. Now, the cost of having an auctioneer come to our site generally runs between $600 to $1,200, plus a percentage of anything that we may recoup. So let's say they may get 25% out of anything that they sell, plus the additional fee. We have found that we can run numerous auctions based on the property that we send to these companies to pick up, and that we can monitor the auctions and set minimums if there's an item that we feel has some type of value, or we know a value of. Where this comes into more significance for the city is that we have a lot of circa 1970-ish obsolete materials, and I'll say some old desks, some file cabinets where perhaps the handles are broken off the file cabinets, one drawer may be missing, things of that nature, that we have no way to dispose of. And literally, what we've done is we've been filling rooms that have been vacant in the MOC with these items, and now we can't utilize these rooms, like our police training room is filled floor-to-ceiling with obsolete material, and we have no way to get rid of that. It's not cost-effective to bring in an auctioneer where we may not make the value of what we have to pay the auctioneer to come and do this. Repo Cast is a Michigan-based company out of Flint that is doing a fair amount of work for other municipalities. Grand Rapids is one major one that they're doing with, but Frazier, there's a number of McComb County agencies that are utilizing this service, and they're taking all items. They're not just cherry-picking the gold wristband, or something of that nature, the diamond ring. They're taking whatever items that a city has to auction, whether it be scrapped police vehicles, or those type of things. They're sending a truck out, they're picking it up, there's a flat fee to pick it up, and then they'll post it in lots, it's $5 per lot, and we can set minimums on those items that we feel have any value whatsoever, and then we're able to monitor the sale of those items. The cons of here is that I'm really limited space-wise in what I can keep in the property room, and with recent changes in law, I have to keep some property 25 years, 50 years, or for life. DNA property, other things, I have to keep basically forever. So I'm always in search of additional property... So, I'm always in search of additional property room space. That means I have to turn over what's in there, and is acquitted, and when it, when it's finished in a case and the appeal period's over, I have to move that property out, so make space for other property. Um, it's gotten to a critical point that I need to do this pretty, pretty rapidly here. In addition, we've talked about the disposal of, of a lot of these other ancillary goods. Because of our city ordinances, we couldn't just give this away to charitable organization. I couldn't go and say, "You represent this group, you have a need for a file cabinet, can I just give you the file cabinet?" Because it's the people's property, and I, and I understand that. This way, if people wanted to bid on this, it would be on an online basis, they could bid on it, and if we set a, a, a cost of five dollars, they could bid on it, and they could award that, get that piece of property. It would help us, uh, take care of that. The only difference between this and propertyroom dot com and, and the price issue is, what if we come across an item that has some value that may be close to the city's purchasing, uh, uh, amount, and that rate currently is fifty-five hundred dollars?
Yes.
You really can't tell what an auction's going to bring. W- w- we can ballpark it, but I can't really tell who's out there and, and buying things. I know there's a, a company out of Chicago that will buy used police cars to make some taxi cabs. I know I can generally get, I'm sorry, I can generally get between thirty-five and forty-five hundred dollars a car, based on the mileage, if it's running. But sometimes it'll go over, depending on how many people are in the auction, or sometimes it'll go less. So, we'll need a little bit of leeway at times in terms of that, uh, uh, that threshold of fifty-five hundred dollars. Obviously, it'll be in our best interest and the city's best interest to get every dollar that we can from these items or goods. We're not going to give anything away. On the other side of this, there are some items that we have for auction that just moving them out of the building is a win for us. Just gaining that space, and this company, if they don't, uh, if it doesn't sell, if it doesn't, they'll dispose of it. That would take us literally a ton of overtime hours, and, and we'd have to lug it all back and put it back where it's at. It's a win for us just to get it out of the building. So, that's why we're looking at this service. We vetted it with several other cities. Uh, we've looked at it, we did, had a couple in-house presentations from the company. I'm satisfied that it'll meet our, our needs and our, and our abilities, and I'd like to give it, uh, give it a chance.
Yeah, the, the finance department also got to meet with this company, and we were very impressed. They get millions and millions of hits. They've got, I think they said three million people signed up on their auction. So, uh, we're very satisfied that we're going to be able to get our highest dollar value possible, and that will benefit the city in, in a financial sense, so...
Thank you. Any questions for either one? Yes, councilmember?
I guess, I guess just a comment. I, I guess the only thing that, that I would have an issue with is, you know, with, when we had, when we had the public auctions, you always had your, your local entrepreneurs that would buy thirty bicycles and, and that thing like that. And this, this kind of eliminates them out of the process, which evidently has already happened already, but, uh...
Well, actually, with bicycles, a little bit different. I've had a, 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 a process of my own, that I dominate back to the community between ten and thirty bicycles a year through the ministerial alliance to give back to the children that don't have bikes, and I generally do it around Christmas. So, I put those, there's a certain number that I call them community bikes. Uh, I put them back in the community, sometimes they're re-appropriated by other people, I recover them again, and I put them back into the community. It's a never-ending process, but in the same token, those people can sit in the comfort of their own homes and bid on those and buy them by a lot. So, they could buy five bikes or ten bikes instead of one.
Good.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I said it in the presentation, and there was two things that specifically impressed me with this company. One, it was about three hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, registered users already, which is significantly more than the company we currently use. Also, the fact that these lots would be taken to Flint. Um, so, for the local people who did want to buy a, an old patrol car, or an old tool, or something, it's not like they have to travel to Chicago to get it. Um, so, I did like the fact that it was within an hour for our residents, they, you know, get rid of it.
Any other questions?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, councilmember Lewandowski.
Is there three hundred and twenty-five thousand, or three million people on this site?
Three hundred, around three hundred and twenty thousand.
That may have been the number of hits they, they got, I mean, yeah.
And then, is there going to be a link on our website?
Yes.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. That concludes our regular part of our agenda. We have, I have several announcements. Um, one thing before, just regular announcements, we had a woman who came to our last council meeting in regard to the, uh, late fee on the utility bills, and I did try to reach out to her, but I wasn't able to locate her. But, um, city staff have looked into that, and they are going to add another seven days to the due date, so it does take it from fifteen days to twenty-two days, and I think that's going to be accomplished pretty soon. So, that's, uh, good news. Also, applications are being accepted now through January eighth for the next Citizens Police Academy, sponsored by the Port Huron Police Department. Applications can be found on the city's website at www dot port huron dot org. For more information, contact Officer Adrian Meinsberg at nine eight four nine seven one five. And city offices will be closed November twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Trash collection for Thursday's customers will be delayed until Friday. And the annual Santa Parade downtown will be held on Friday, November the twenty-seventh. And I'd just like to wish, before I pass it on to anybody else, everybody a, a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope they get to enjoy it with their families. Is there anything from anyone else on council?
Uh, just one comment, uh, for anybody that's, that's involved with hockey or is interested in hockey. Traditionally, the Larry Mann's Thanksgiving Hockey Tournament always, is always held the day after Thanksgiving in the evening, and, uh, in the following Saturday in the afternoon. This year, for a simple, for a change, the games for the Larry Mann's High School Tournament will be at one PM and three PM in the main arena at, at McMoran, and following that will be the, uh, Christmas Parade. And then, one of the evenings, it'll be followed with a Prowlers game, and you can get in the Prowlers game for a dollar with a donation of some, uh, unwrapped toys. So, uh, got a chance to do a lot this weekend, and you don't have to go far.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Ruiz?
I would just like to thank the McGregor family on Water Street for donating our official city Christmas tree in front of McMoran. I'd also like to thank Eastern Michigan Bank for sponsoring our tree this year, which allowed us to buy lots of new lights. Uh, last year, we had some issues with the older lights, a bulb would go out, and the whole half the tree would go out, so, um, it's looking good.
Good.
It is a nice tree.
Anyone else? And I'd, uh, like a motion to adjourn, if I could, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Please adjourn.